Okay, everybody. Let's get started. I call this October 17th Planning Commission meeting to order. Tonight, we have more bracing discussion about small cell wireless. So I don't want you guys to get too riled up out there and just try to keep it down as we go through this important, important stuff, okay? Let's start with roll call, starting on my right.
Mark Lewis.
Larry Crandall.
Rituja Indapure.
Mark Baughman.
Eric Brooks.
Josh Amato.
And Commissioner O'Farrell is excused this evening. So we do still have a quorum with six of us. Next is approval of the agenda. It's a brief agenda this evening. Does anyone have any comments on the agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Then the meeting minutes from the September 19th meeting. We need approval on that. Did anyone have any comments? Corrections? Okay, we'll call the September 19th meeting minutes approved by common consent. Next is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you wanted to speak on 5G or small cell or microcell, anything related to that, we'll have public comment for that later. If you want to speak on something else other than that, some other G, the BGs, something like that, now is the time for that. So three minutes per person, five minutes. If you represent an organization, would anyone like to make non-agenda public comments? Mr. Stickney?
Hello, Planning Commission, Paul Stickney, 2260 North East. Inglewood Hill Road. And I checked with the city. This is legal to show, but I can't share. This is a really excellent whiskey. Old Forester 1910. High-quality stuff, as is our city, and we're all interested in trees. This is a 1910, which is about when cars got started in the U.S. And around 30 or 40 years later, in the 1950s, after World War II, suburban sprawl happened. That pattern of single-family housing was unlike anything that had been seen in the world up until that time. I'm here just to ad lib a tiny bit about thinking about how Samamish got to where it is. You know, King County planned all the housing policies on the plateau up until incorporation of 1999. Most of the houses up here by King County were built from 1980 to 1999. And you've heard the number I talked about a couple of weeks ago. About 19,000 of our 22,000 houses in the city were, you know, permitted by King County and about 3,000 by the city. Samamish. Well, we have a lot of single-family housing. And over the next few weeks, and this is just an extemporaneous comment here, over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be sharing a series of articles about enrich and sustain, which is about changing King County's pattern of growth. It looks backwards about 60 years and forwards over 80-year cycles of life. And the thing I'm asking is how important are cars going to be 100 years from now? And isn't it time for our community to evaluate, how do our housing supplies meet what's needed internally over cycles of life for those who live in our city? So look forward for enrich and sustain. And I suggest that we change King County, which many people would call unfettered growth, and Samamish, which has had a mix of both minimized and no growth. Enrich and sustain calls for optimal growth. Stay tuned, a lot more to come. And I'm not going to share.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else for non-agenda items?
Just following up on Paul's ad lib.
Now it's on, following up on Paul's ad lib for the shout-out to the wine industry, realizing that they do cure much of their alcohol in oak. Okay.
We'll talk about that some more later. All right, if there's no more non-agenda item public comment, let's move on to our main topic for this evening, our small cell 5G wireless communication discussion. And I believe we have a presentation. Dennis Wright?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is our second meeting. The first meeting was about a month ago. And so as we walk through this workshop, we're going to talk about the draft code that you folks have received.
Sorry, Dennis, can you, for the video and for the record, can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, thank you. Dennis Osborne, Principal Planner, City of Samamish. And so tonight, we're going to do an information conversation and then also we'll be seeking some directions to what to do next. Going to go over why we're changing the code, just to recap, a brief recap from the last meeting, because it's spent a little bit of time. We're going to talk about the exemptions, of what's exempt from a land use permit within the code, and then the regulations themselves. We'll talk about some next steps. And then would entertain a dialogue between staff and the commission about the code that you've had a chance to look at, and then public comment. So first slide, this is a repeat of the one you saw about a month ago. Why are we having this conversation? So we had some conflicts within the code. The telecommunications code is a bit out of date, so the conflicts are with some of the new FCC regulations, as well as some conflicts within the permitted use section of the code. We want to be sure that we're compliant with state statute, the newer rule from this year, the FCC rule, and of course, the eventual deployment of 5G. So that's what brings us to this evening here, this conversation. So it's 218.55, the wireless communication facilities, the complete title, would be repealed. The permitted use section that has references to WCF or cell use would also be repealed, and then references to the town center design criteria to ensure that they're not left out as the town center does its thing and does its work for this continuing development. So the quick overview is three components of the code. We're going to talk about the process for permitting, design, I'm sorry, process for permitting location, and then design last. So first on process exemptions. So within the code, we have exemptions. And the key part here is we really want to try to focus the small cell to go through exemptions. And we restructured the code in that fashion, okay? And the main reason is because of the shot clock, and we're anticipating, especially with 5G, batched applications. Batch meaning we could have 20 or 30 applications or 40 applications come in at once. And so if the providers meet the criteria for the exemption, they'd be exempt from the land use permit. Could still need a right-of-way permit or a building permit or electrical permit, but they'd be exempt from the land use. If they don't meet the exemption criteria, then we move up to the permit. And then if they don't meet the permit criteria, then they have the option for variance. So against the exemptions, though, they are the small cells that I just chatted about. Eligible facilities request is the next one. That goes back, that's some exemption that we already have primarily for micro, I'm sorry, for macro cells. And that's pretty much a carryover from the existing code. And that's to pretty much deal with some modifications that may occur to a micro pole. Micro, macro, macro pole. And then TV antennas for television would be exempt under 10 feet. Satellite dishes for TV, you know, like a dish network would be exempt. And then if we have an emergency situation that were deployed by emergency management or whatever, they would be exempt. And there's also some language in there for like a special event. My understanding is the golf course here had an event and needed a temporary cell facility. So there's some language in there for exempting that as well. We have, in the process, two decision types, decision by the director where there's no administrative appeal. And then we have, and that's a type one, and then we have a type-two decision by director appealable to the hearing examiner. And those type-one or type-two are consistent with the permit types that's within the land use code in general. The exemptions, we have no appeal. And the idea again is to try to funnel folks to meet that exemption criteria. And one of the benefits is no appeal, because you're exempt from the land use permit. So the permit type again for the noticing, type-one. And type-one is going to primarily be the small cell. And I should note, a point of clarification, small cell doesn't necessarily mean 5G. Small cell could be 4G, 3G, but it could also be 5G, okay? But because they do get the batched option within the FCC rule, the notice would be to adjacent property owners, or else, you know, with 30 or 40 applications, it really gets to be fairly cumbersome. And we have the shot clock to factor in. And again, we're trying to push that through the exemption process anyway. I should also note that on those, a lot of those, and Public Works is here to speak to any questions on this that might pop up, but a lot of those facilities, if they could connect to existing poles, especially for the small cell, those are going to be somewhat tied to HOA providers. And so they would also get contacted through the HOA if they tried to connect, the providers tried to connect within that realm. The type-two, which is primarily going to be the macro, the large poles, that's about 1,000, that is 1,000 feet of notice. And then a variance, if they don't meet any of the criteria, the variance application is also 1,000 feet. So the variance language that we put in the code is a bit different than the standard land use variance language. It is, it shows four criteria here for meeting that variance, and it is tied to wireless cell facilities, as opposed to the normal criteria you would see in a land use variance, okay? And the ties here are pretty much for the most part technical. I think there's a provision there that talks about if you can't get onto somebody's private property for a connection, you know, we want documentation for that, but that would be, you know, part of the criteria for the variance. So we switch over to location. So where would they go? And what's the siding criteria? So again, this is a bit of a different code than most land use codes. And the reason is because typically, when the planning commission has dealt with land use codes, you're, for the most part, free to, you know, create whatever land use code you would like within the parameters that meets the, of what you feel that meets the needs of the City of Samamish. A bit of a different animal here because of those FCC preemptive rules, okay? So we can't normally just say, well, it's here and nowhere here. We can't do that, because the FCC language talks about effectively prohibiting. And so we have to come up with a way to navigate this and to allow some deployment here, but also recognize that we can't prohibit the deployment or effectively prohibit the deployment. So we came up with this process. So tier-one is, would be co-locating on existing facility, and for the most part, macro and micro are going to be the same here, and I'll note the difference on the next slide. But co-locate with existing wireless cell facilities, or within the commercial zone, or on existing building or structure, or within the public right-of-way on an existing or replacement structure, okay? And those are not in any categorical order. If you meet any of those, you're a tier-one. If you can't, and by technical analysis, and that's the way the code is drafted, by technical analysis, you can't meet those, then you slide to tier-two. And that's multifamily zone, or within a public right-of-way on a new tower. The R1 through R8 is the lower-density zoning, but it's not on those structures. It would be on non-residential structures, such as churches, schools, upon permission from, obviously, from those facilities, the owners of those facilities. And then again, through technical analysis, if you don't meet those criteria, you slide to the variance criteria. And the variance criteria, I went through with you already what that would be, and it's a variance process, and it would be a type-two permit. And so the reason, again, we settled on this is we also wanted to create a clear process for the public to understand, in terms of why did that cell tower end up here? You know, so if somebody came in and there was a cell tower that had to be deployed in someplace that would seem out of place to the residents here, and maybe even to the elected officials, but it had to go there, because, again, we can't effectively create a prohibition, right? And so we at least have created a tier-one. They didn't meet that, we can document it. Tier-two, they didn't meet that, we can document it. Variance, this is why it went here, it met the criteria, we can document that. And that gives some assurance to the staff in terms of how do we process something that's an anomaly? It gives some assurances to the provider on those anomaly situations, and also for the elected officials, if somebody gives them a call, why is this here? They can pull the record and see, well, A, B, C, and here's the documentation to support why staff made that decision. Oh, wrong click. There we go. So all of those are the same on the micro, except the very last dot on tier-one. That's the real difference, and that is new poles within public right-of-way, not otherwise exempt. And the reason that we put that in there for micro is micro could potentially attach to municipal poles, but our code has a prohibition on attaching to municipal poles. Since it has that prohibition, then they should be able to attach to new poles within the right-of-way, monopoles at the street, whatever, in order to meet their deployment needs. So that's why that bullet point is in there for micro, okay? Keep going to the right. So some design criteria here for, I tried to break that down into some sort of a table here. So we have some design criteria for the micro, for the antennas. We have a criteria for equipment being underground, above ground, and then pole-mounted equipment in those order, 1, 2, 3. We're looking for the colors to be browns, greens, blues, and grays, and we came up with those by just looking around town, and those were the colors that we saw on poles. We made a provision in the code that you can have art on that, so long as it goes through the Art Commission, and that's on the equipment. Or you can disguise the equipment as an amenity, if you just have to work with Public Works, or, like I said, the Arts Commission, you know, if it's a trashcan or a kiosk or whatever. But we didn't really get specific on that criteria, because if they wanted to work with Public Works or the Arts Commission, there's some latitude in there, but we did call that And then on this one, a new pole integrated with existing pole design, that would be the micro, so we want the poles to sort of match up with the other ones that are deployed out there. Again, utilizing colors that match the natural environment. We have a max height for the micro of 50, max height of the macro at 90. Design for co-location, except for 5G. Fully contained equipment, and then antennas can be painted, except for 5G. So we put together some slides to sort of illustrate what I was just chatting with you about, and this is for illustrative purposes. What we have on this slide here is what is just sort of like a freestanding monopole, where the equipment is in the, all the equipment is in the tower, the canister on the top. And this is just to show a scenario of, for whatever reason, they couldn't connect to another pole, right? And what would it look like with one provider, and then the other pole you see in the background, a different provider, right? Because we have some spacing criteria, I'll touch upon here in a minute. And so that gives you an idea of there's provider one, then you have a utility pole, a streetlight, another pole from a different provider, then another pole down the way. It gives you an idea of what that might look like in that, sort of a worst-case scenario, if you would. And then we have another illustration. That's where the equipment's in the base, and the antennas are on top, instead of a fully-contained unit. And that is, that would actually also need to be back about 2 feet. This isn't to scale, but just for illustrative purposes, that would be one, again, showing where the equipment's in the base. So again, we have, they are allowed on poles, lightstands and structures. This is the micro, they cannot be sitting on, which I mentioned earlier, but there's the narrative that goes with that. A new pole's okay if the existing pole does not work, and those were the illustrations I showed you ahead of time, if they couldn't attach to like a telephone pole, or an HOA wouldn't let them attach to one of their poles. We're saying 600 feet apart per provider, 100 feet from another provider. So 600 feet from provider A is 600 feet, but then provider B can come in, and they would only have to be 100 feet, because we can't create just to where one provider has a, for lack of a better term, a monopoly over an area. So we have to find a way to put them in there, but have some spacing in there. Must be in alignment and equidistant between existing poles and on the property line within the R-zone, and that looks like, a bit like that. There's a 600-foot spacing, and that's the amenity zone you'll see in the code. And that's, we created that language just to make sure that they're in line. There's an alignment there with the poles. And there's just not a pole, you know, on one side of the sidewalk, and then a pole on another side of the sidewalk, but just to create where there's some sort of a straight design aesthetically. And then when I talked about on the property line, there's the example, so instead of being in front of a house, it would just be on the property line. And this is the example of a provider A, then 100 feet, provider B, 100 feet, provider C, 100 feet, provider D also. So we sort of blended a couple of examples in this slide here, in the amenity zone, on the property line, and multiple providers. So where we're at here is, tonight is a workshop again. We're tentatively scheduled to have a public hearing in December, nothing in November at this time, and then council sometime in 2020. And we're open for questions.
Thanks, Dennis. Go ahead, Larry.
No one else has a question?
Oh, I think we probably all have.
Oh, I was.
We'll let you go first, then.
I had three down, so I'll just go with one. Bus stops, they're covered, would that be allowable with, what's the correct term for any, yeah, sheltered bus stop?
Could they connect to a sheltered bus stop?
Yes.
I think if it meets our design, our other criteria, we have no prohibition, it would meet that definition, I think, of structure within there. We do allow on other public structures. It would be up to, I think, the bus folks whether they would want it to connect.
And the reason I ask that question is, I believe that some of the transportation companies are looking at putting in more bus shelters. That's, but again, they're looking into it. Okay. Thank you.
Mark, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. How many providers are there that we know of? Is it five or six, something like that? That I'm working with, and I've had conversations with, three total. You know, I'm not sure who's out there, maybe the providers can speak to that at some point in time, but I'm aware of three, unless you...
Yeah, you typically hear, I'm sorry, Eileen Kiefer, Kenyon Deason, from the City Attorney's Office. We typically hear from the big three, which is T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T, but that's not to say that, and that's for small cells. I'll note for macro facilities, often carriers do not own their own towers. A lot of times, they may rent those through Crown Castle or other infrastructure companies. So we haven't heard from any of those folks on this code in this city that I'm aware of.
Okay, the follow-up to that is, if there's three, which is kind of a low end, the three big ones, and there's 600 feet apart, and then there's another 100 feet, if there's three of them, that's how many poles per 600 feet? Well, if there's 100-foot separation, so one, if I'm provider A, I can put a pole in, my next pole has to be 600 feet from my first pole. But if I'm provider A and I put in my pole, and provider B comes in, he only has to be 100 feet away from provider A. And then provider B, then his next pole would have to be 600 feet, if that makes sense. Because we can't, if we go 600 from all providers, then we could effectively, since that's about the length of a block, we could, if the first provider on that block could put their pole, and we didn't allow another one in, we could effectively be banning the provider from going in there. And that's why the 100-foot... And that brings us to my concern, is that's a lot of poles. Could be a lot of poles. Again, that situation occurs if they're not connecting to existing light poles or utility poles. So in neighborhoods, for instance? So if they could connect to existing light poles or existing utility poles in neighborhoods. Okay, thank you. The other poles is the situation if they're not allowed to connect, for whatever reason. Okay, thanks.
Do you have anything, Rituja?
I do, but some...
Okay. How about Josh?
Sure. Were you able to find out the reason why the ban of adding these to municipal-owned poles, why Public Works preferred that?
Public Works is coming to... I can chime in on that one.
...the city engineer for, the main reason we're concerned about having one of these school poles is the same. When we go, if they want to put them on a... Signal, okay. If they want to put them on a traffic signal or any lights that we have to maintain, we would be required to have to coordinate, work around their systems. Sometimes we have to take, you know, turn the power off on the signals, and it'd be, you know, working was, it would be an inconvenience, but also safety for our workers. So we don't want to have to go through that hassle. And also, if these cell towers want to come work on theirs, they may be turning off the power or affecting our symbol, or, excuse me, our systems as well. But that's mainly the main reason, is a safety and just the fact that it would prevent us from maintaining our own systems.
Can I just ask a clar, a couple clarifying things about that? Has that been the case prior to now? I don't know, I'd like to say forever, but it sounded like when you described it, that that's always the case, and it's just continuing?
Right.
Or is this something new related to small cell?
It's continuing. We don't allow any other antennas or anything in any of our systems. Up until recently, King County maintained our traffic signals. We now do it in-house, so we have our own crews that are out there. And, you know, up even to this point, we don't allow anything to be connected to those systems.
And then my other question would be, a lot of what you described, I certainly could see with traffic signals, absolutely. Light poles, though, how often does the city own light poles? I know, for example, some of the ones on 228th, probably those are all ours. A lot of the things in the neighborhoods are not. Can you kind of give me an idea?
Only on the arterials. So 228th, Inglewood, 244th, all the main roads, those are the ones, the streetlights that are owned and under the responsibility of the city. We do contract with PSC, but we, again, we also have our own crews that we're bringing in-house.
Thanks.
What are other cities doing in relation to municipal-owned poles?
Some are yes, some are no. And the ones that I believe are allowing them are only on streetlights, they still don't put them on the signal poles.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, just kind of all over, but I was wondering, are there any regulations for 5G for King County? Has that been established, or are cities just doing their own things throughout King County? So do we have a county-wide regulation or rules?
Not that I'm aware of, and to the extent that King County did, frankly, I don't know that their land use control ordinances would trump Samamish's. I mean, that would potentially be applicable out in unincorporated King County, but it wouldn't apply within Samamish city limits, so, but I'm not aware that they've adopted any. But I'm no expert on King County code either, so.
Okay. And then for batched applications, are we saying that if, even if they fall within different types or tiers, if one gets rejected, for example, does the whole batch application get rejected, or is it just one by one?
We have a language in there toward, no, one issue doesn't hold up the rest of the batch, we can process it through and resolve the conflict with the one.
Okay. And then are we required to do public notice for when the new, for example, a new pole is going up, or a new WCF is going to go up? Are we required to do that?
Are we required?
As per these code?
Oh, okay. For the variance, yes, of course, required, and that's 1,000-foot notice. For the macro, we have in there, and that's the really large one, 1,000-foot notice. We have, for the small ones, adjacent to the property owner, because they're so close. So, and I think we're, you know, we may end up chatting with you here in a minute about maybe modifying that language here, a little bit adjacent and adjoining, right? Just to clarify that. But that's what we're proposing right now. If you're exempt under the small deployment, there would be no notice, because you're exempt from a land use permit. Now, again, I want to take a moment here to clarify, exempt from a land use permit, not a building permit, non-electrical permit, or a right-of-way permit, if it's in the right-of-way, just the land use permit.
And Commissioner, I want to... And Commissioner, I want to, I want to qualify too, to the extent you're asking about, is it required? Is it required by federal law? No. Is it required by state law? No. This is, this is what, I guess this is a choice that staff has made in, in developing the code. But there's no requirement for it.
I, I think with the concerns that people have, especially about 5G, I think it would be great if we can let, you know, neighbors and institutions also know if that particular cell is going.
Can I just add, though, that, to be real clear, it's not really we, it's really the providers that are providing the notice. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not the city that's obligated to do it. It's really the providers that are obligated to provide any kind of noticing that's within this section of proposed code.
And the other thing I would share, and the Public Works Director could chime in on this if he would like, if I'm misstating here, but, but a lot of, my understanding and chatting with Public Works is a lot of the poles that they would be looking to connect to are privately owned poles owned by an HOA. So they're going to need permission from an HOA, which would tell me, once they go to an HOA, the HOA's going to have to have some sort of a meeting and dialogue with however they do their approval before they grant permission, a lease, whatever they, whatever the HOA is going to do out there in terms of, of, so all those neighborhoods, once they connect, contact HOA are going to know that it's coming.
Okay, thank you. And then how would, if there's a temporary WCF, how is that regulated? Or are these rules and regulations applicable to that? Or?
For the temporary, I think, oh my goodness, it's limited in time as to how long it can be there. I want to say... I want to say...
As long as it's there, we can, you can let me know.
No, there's a time limit.
That's fine.
And my, my, I have to apologize. My, my faded memory is it's, I think it's changed a few times. I was doing edit works on it, so I don't want to give you the wrong.
That's fine, yeah.
The wrong date. But there is a timeframe on it.
Okay, as long as we have something in there. And then also, if there's an application, like, you know, even with that batched application, if there's one that, that doesn't meet all the requirements, do we have, in, in our code, do we have any sort of variance or any process for resubmital of the application after the whole, maybe the batch application has expired? Do we have any process where they can resubmit?
So it's an interesting process. I'm going to try to walk through that, and I'm going to ask council to correct me because I'm probably going to get this wrong. But, so a batched application, and there's a way, it depends on the type of application and how the shot clock gets started. When an application is made, the clock starts, correct?
Typically, yeah.
Typically.
It can restart depending, but.
And if there's a, if there's a problem with them on review from staff, they can stop that clock, and you can give notice to the provider, and then they provide their information. And I think it's, we have 10 days, if I remember correctly, under the FCC rule. And then, so that puts that clock on stop, and then it starts again once the corrected information is provided by the provider to the city.
Well, and Commissioner, I think you're, I think you're asking about what happens if, say, in a batch of 30, you have one that's more complex, the other 29, easy-peasy, no problem. And the code provides for that. So the city can approve or deny individual wireless facilities in a batched application. So those 29 that are no problem, and a lot, and hopefully those are exempt anyways, and perhaps don't even need a land use permit. But saying they do, maybe they need a tier one. Those sail through, they get their stamp, the providers have, at least from the land use perspective, what they need to go out and deploy those. And I think staff would just spend a little extra time, and we would kind of figure out what to do with that 30th application that perhaps didn't fit with the rest of them. Whether that's a re-submital, or just sort of an amendment of what's there, we'd have to do that on a case-by-case basis. But the idea is to not hold up the 29 while you're working with the 30th. That may be more problematic.
And my legal was answering that, the, the temporary is 30 days.
30 days, okay, thank you. And I just had one suggestion, if we could add to the definitions, the definition for RF, I think that would be great. Thanks.
Will do.
Did you have some questions?
I had, yeah. This, this one is, I, I don't really need an answer. It's, I'm showing favoritism, being a little selfish. Some of us in the city, not just on commission and things, are very adamant about having the Urban Forest Management Plan implemented. So if this is going to affect street trees, again, I don't need an answer right now. Hopefully, staff can work all that in, and we'll get the Urban Forest Management Plan going. Okay.
I'm assuming you're talking about removal of trees?
Or sharing of space. Yes.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, I, just as a slight echo to that, I have wondered if some of these applications might not include requests to remove trees, if they're doing engineering to figure out something that'll work. And that would, I think, to many of us, be a much different scenario to discuss than just putting a pole someplace in the right-of-way. I'm not sure that this code provision needs to address that, but I don't know.
There's a, some language in there, I may have the numbers wrong, but a caliper of a certain size of a deciduous cannot be removed, a caliber of a certain size of an evergreen cannot be removed. I want to say eight inches and 12 inches, and I forget which one is which. Something like that.
All right. If I can indulge, I have a few questions before everybody takes their next turn. One thing, some of these are just, in reading the, the specifics in the text, there's a prohibition against any of these in a park. And I would say that in general, that, that seems agreeable to me. But, you know, we do have some fairly large forested parks where one side of the park could be on park property, but still be poles or on the right-of-way that nobody in the park would actually see anyway. That seems like a bit of a blanket provision that could have unintended consequences. And I just encourage thinking about that a little bit. Maybe some more nuanced language would be good. I'm not sure. But, you know, it's not like we just have one small park someplace where it's easy to figure out. We have actually a pretty decent amount of park property that might, might actually provide opportunities.
Take a look at that.
And we could, and Commissioner, we could, I could pull some language perhaps from some codes from some other municipalities. I believe that was direction from park, from our Parks Department. But I, I have seen these facilities deployed in, on sports fields, where you have large, you know, lighting facilities. You already might have tall structures. Sometimes it's a way to make use of the infrastructure you already have there. So we can, we can pull some examples for consideration.
I think that the intent is that you don't want to be having a picnic and looking at four giant.
Right.
Cell towers, you know, within 10 feet of you, right? You're trying to, trying to keep the natural aesthetic in our parks.
But there can be some synergies as well.
I think everybody agrees with that. But, but just as a blanket statement, you could force them to go places maybe that are less desirable. So, anyway. Yeah, the, you mentioned the notification. I still believe that we should be cautious about adjacent or adjoining even. I still believe that if notification is required, even if you're across the street, it should be a circle, right? It should be a radius. I'm not quite convinced yet that, you know, if you're 100 feet away down the street, you get notified. But the person directly across the street who isn't technically adjoining or adjacent doesn't get notified. Not sure that's what people would expect.
Is there a number that you were thinking that would, the length of the, if it's on a block, the block gets notified?
I think as long as, I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm the expert in any way at recommending things. But as long as we're consistent about a, a radius in all directions around, that requires notification, then I think that's a reasonable way to approach it.
Okay.
I do note that there's many instances when additional documentation that language is in there is, is required for a variety of different things. And all of those things seem appropriate to me. But it, it does seem that if we have three, or perhaps four, common providers who are doing this, the staff is going to get lots of stuff. I mean, engineering data, and it could be a lot. If there's any, my suggestion would be to consider if there's any way to streamline that, or, or create some, I don't like creating a lot of, you know, structure that's not necessary. But if, if there's a form that they can utilize or a structure to the information they provide, so that when staff receives backup documentation for why this won't work, or why we chose to do that, then if there's a lot of those, and I'm not sure that there will be, but if there are, it might lessen the burden of review and streamline the process a bit. I'd just suggest thinking about that, because there's so many steps where if it's not a slam dunk version, tier one, then they have to provide documentation. You know, what did you consider? How did you consider this? What's your engineering reasons? That could turn into, they, they could literally try to overwhelm the staff with paperwork. And I don't think that's really the intent in either way. So they might consider putting some structure around that. Another question I had is, am I correct that most of the utility poles in the city that have power lines on them are owned by probably PSC?
That is correct. There's, PSC controls all the, or owns all the power poles.
So in my experience, everybody that uses those poles has to then go to PSC and get some kind of a lease, or some kind of a document that allows them to use that pole.
That's correct. They have to get an attachment agreement.
It's correct to also say then that all of these providers would have to do that, right? If they want to attach to a PSC pole, which is what we're most commonly talking about with these utility poles, they're going to have to go to PSC. So my question is, has there been any discussion with PSC about that?
I've had discussions with PSC. We had a meeting with them. I sent them a copy of the ordinance. I had a, I had a conversation with them today, by email, on offsets. And they've been pretty quiet. I've gotten almost zero feedback on anything. So we reached out to them.
Good. So that suggests that what we're expecting can happen. Right. Right-of-ways. Am I correct, and this one I thought of as you're presenting this, in some instances in the city, I, I think that we have situations where, prior to the city's standards being implemented, King County standards allowed a sidewalk on one side, and no sidewalk on the other side. So what you end up with is people who have a front yard that they mostly own, but there's also technically a section that's public right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
And then when we're talking about providers being able to put a pole in the right-of-way and deal with the city, I guess it sounds to me like people could be a bit surprised to find out that someone could ask for a type, I don't know, it's tier one if it's in a residential neighborhood, but they could certainly request a pole in somebody's front yard. Is that right?
I would say, and could, could a person request a pole in their front yard?
Could a provider request to put a pole?
If I'm the property owner, yeah, I could go and make that request.
Could one of the providers request that?
Right, right, correct.
Commissioner, I think, I think we need to look into, I, yeah, I recall some amish has some strange legacy issues with rights of way, especially that King County, that the tract X pieces where the city can request it as right-of-way whenever, whenever the city demands it. I know that that's caused some, you know, surprise to homeowners. They think they own out to the street, and all of a sudden, the city says, oh, I need this strip. Guess what? It's actually mine. Look at your title documents. I know we've actually had to institute suit sometimes to essentially buy, to get back what the city's, as a quiet title. So I think we'd need to take a look at that and see whether that, what, if anything, we can do about that. But that, that's, that's a good concern, and I, we should take a look at that more closely, because that could be a surprise to folks.
So out of my ignorance, I apologize. Are you saying on a piece of property, private property, or in the right-of-way in front of a piece of property?
Let me give an example of someone that I know who lives in the city, who has no sidewalk in front of their house. I believe that there's, it's three, four, or five-foot strip that, from a legal standpoint, is technically public right-of-way.
So it was behind the pavement, but on the right of it, gotcha.
It looks like my front yard.
Right, 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 right.
I mow it. I have trees planted for your Urban Forest Management plant.
It's one of these legacy issues from King County.
Yeah. So let's just be careful about that, because I know that situation exists.
Good note, yeah.
And I wouldn't want to unintentionally, or from not paying attention, create a situation where the provider could go, well, this is a right-of-way, so this is the process I'm going through. And you have neighborhoods that are going, well, wait, wait a minute, that's my front yard. Even if it's the corner of my front yard, it's still my front yard.
Yeah. That's a great note. We'll take a look at that. We'll study that, and we'll visit on that. Thank you.
And the last thing on my notes is that I, we got a lot of public comment from the providers. And it was, I would say it was a wide mixture of comments. And I think, I, at least from my point of view, would say, I would really encourage that you guys take the time and go through there, and the things that are appropriate comments, you know, we should, we should respond and correct language, or make adjustments, or think carefully about dimension restrictions that are very specific, that maybe don't need to be that specific. I think there were a lot of comments in there that were okay to consider. There were some that I would have pretty strong concerns about. But, but, you know, those were, those stood out pretty clearly. Many of the other ones were worth considering to try to make sure that what we're creating, you know, we can really get down to talking about the actual disagreements, if there are any, not the nuisance of the language and that, that sort of thing.
I second that, because I think we got some more just after, or close to when the meeting started too. So and I think they're kind of meeting, you know, discussions that we probably need to review and understand what those mean. Yep. So I would support revisiting them as well. Thank you.
Okay.
In that vein, and I'm not sure, I don't want to jump the gun here and interrupt questions, but in that vein, when you're, when planning commission's done with questions, I do want to cover this handout here that touches upon what you just, what the chair just talked about.
Okay. Josh or Eric?
When we were meeting, we were talking about homeowners associations and notices. And I was asking how many, how many residents are essentially covered by a homeowners association? And of those, how many are active? In that, will some people within homeowners associations be noticed more equally than others that might not be as active?
So there's about 60 homeowners associations. I understand there's about one that's inactive, where I think the city is getting the billing or something to that effect on the pole. I'm looking down the, the path here, but there's about 60 homeowners association, one that I guess you would call inactive right now.
Yeah, there was one recent that was kind of near the Pine Lake area, that we suddenly inherited the, the streetlights. But I think all the others, it's either they have homeowners, or you have an area such as Tamarack, which is all privately owned, and they actually kind of defunct their HOA. So it's all privately owned areas out there.
Okay. And my recollection is that if the provider is attempting to put these devices on privately owned, HOA-owned poles, then the HOA would then be responsible for noticing. Is that?
Yeah, the HOA's going to do whatever the HOA does in terms of getting approval from its membership to authorize the, and, you know, I didn't look at all 60, whatever their bylaws are, whatever that process is for each HOA.
But then the, the provider then no longer has to notice separately?
We have that currently. If they meet the exempt criteria for a small cell deployment, there is no notice. And that's because of what we're just talking about. If the majority is HOA, that's how that connection's going to occur.
Okay.
If they're outside the exemption, that's, I think, what the chair was talking about, and having a broader than just adjoining or adjacent, a broader notification. And in that scenario, if we come back with the commission with that revision, it would be whatever the HOA does to, whatever it does, plus the notice that we would have within our code.
Thanks for the presentation. And thanks even for the presentation a month ago. I did watch that and found it helpful. I think the provider input was helpful. There were some interesting things in there. The tone was a little different than their comment letters, however. I found the tone in the comment letters a little bit, you know, we're kind of here doing this because we, we're just being nice, and we really don't have to do any of this stuff. So, so let's, let's try to keep it on the, you know, keep them engaged, and so we can kind of get what we're looking for here. I've got some questions about, so the small cell equal the directed beam, or does that just mean like small in stature? I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around small cell, macro site, micro site, 5G, 4G, all these kind of things. What are we?
Small cells are, are small wireless facilities is, are defined by federal law, and really those relate to stature. And really, it's keyed off of structure height. Is generally, it's going to be a structure that's 50 feet or less, unless the adjacent structures or adjacent, adjacent poles are higher than 50 feet, and then you can deviate by about 10%. And that's the idea, is to keep, keep consistent with the environment around it. And that's the idea is to keep, keep consistent with the environment around it. So, for example, if you have like a 60-foot building and you have a 65-foot structure, you're probably not going to notice that, that little, those five feet over the 60 feet. So that's, that's what small cell legally is. I couldn't speak whether that's directed beam. That's, that's a bit beyond my expertise.
The, and the providers are here, at least one of them is, and two of them, and they may during, you know, answer during their opportunity here under public testimony. But beaming and that sort of concept, remember, small cell is 5G, 4G, or 3G. And so how that signal is transmitted from 4G could be very different than how, my understanding is how it's transmitted as 5G. And the 5G is the one that we're really talking about, the, the distance issue. It's more sensitive to the distance issue than say 4G or 3G is my understanding.
And that makes me think-
But all of them meet small, the definition of small cell, potentially.
Because they're small stature. Right, okay. And the, the quick sidebar, the, the 5G, I noticed in their presentation that the 600 foot, that was kind of on the high end. It could be as low, as little as 250 feet.
It could be as small as 250 feet. The AT&amp;T slide, I think it was 250 feet to 750 feet.
Right.
We did 600 because it's basically a block. And if we, it's one per block, and then what if we have multiple providers, like in the slide I showed you, then you could end up, and again, that's the worst case scenario if they were not allowed to hook onto existing poles. Right?
Right, right. So tree height versus pole height, we're talking about, you know, 50 foot, there's a lot of trees that are way over 50 feet, and I'm just curious if, you know, if, if there's going to be some technical issues with that. They talked about maybe trimming some trees. They can't maybe remove trees, but just wondering. I guess I'm trying to go through like the period of discovery here, like truly understand what the, what the levers are here because there's some technical issues that they're up against, that they, you know, they just got to, the beam won't go around a corner or go up over a hill or whatever.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so there's that part, and there's this, I think Mark touched on it, there's this, really this neighborhood character component that we kind of circle back to, right? What works in town center, and what might work all right in town center for aesthetics, may not work in Monahan, for example, where there are no streetlights and there, I paste the utility poles, and they're about 200 foot apart. So, and, and many of the properties are, you know, could be 200 feet wide. So suddenly, there's problems with this even initial code language for really making it work. There's property, you're not going to be able to get on a property line and have them 200 foot apart. There are just things that won't work in certain parts of the neighborhood. So I think that we may need to look at different areas of the city and, and maybe make little determinations that kind of better suit those areas. I don't mean to make it more complex, but we have a complex kind of tapestry in our city that we're trying to make this one singular overarching kind of generalized global thing plug into, and that may be challenging. What else here? I think the pole replacement, we looked at some of those. I think that could be, we'd want to have some mechanism to make sure that that's being coordinated with the existing poles that are around it. I think there's a little bit of that, but again, sometimes it's wood utility poles down the street in a more rural area town, and sometimes it's more new streetlights like we have out in 228. So I think there's a lot of different variation in there, even on the color, right? They, they have in their presentation that they pick colors that match the pole, and we don't have language in there that really links up to that, which in many cases might work better than having a limit to four colors, you know? So that's one of their comments that they had, I thought was pretty good. I thought also it was, it was interesting when they found that they could put in a standalone site, that they would sometimes mix in an amenity that was missing, like a streetlight or something, into that installation to kind of help, help out with the community at the same time. And I thought that was a really great idea. It might be worth kind of reaching out to the community and kind of finding out what kind of amenities people are wanting in their different neighborhoods so that when we have an application for provider XYZ, maybe we say, hey, you know, can you guys put a streetlight on this thing too? And then suddenly, we kill a couple birds with one stone. I don't know, maybe I feel like I should give someone else a turn here. Should I just keep going? I think we talked about the color, the provider, provider consistency. Again, with our graphics, we kind of show provider A, provider B, and they look exactly the same. But I think in our discussion we had earlier in the week that that's not really the case, that they're kind of all over the board as far as the way they look. So I think, again, community's going to look at this code, they're going to see these graphics, they're going to expect these things, and they're going to get something different, and that's going to cause an uproar.
Yeah, and that's fair. And we actually had some conversation about what we put up, sort of sticks in the mind, but the cautionary note, and I know you can be as cautionary as you want, the image is the thousand words, but again, we think the majority are going to be hooked to poles, PSE poles, wood poles, utility, you know, light poles. We were trying to paint for you, what if, sort of that worst case scenario, what could it look like in the worst case scenario if there was a street where they couldn't connect? They had to put in what I'm calling monopoles, because, you know, those poles were not a streetlight or a utility pole, they were just a pole designed for cellular equipment. So it was difficult to try to demonstrate that without including that hurdle that you're bringing, that you're pointing out. So, yeah, I hear you. It's an issue.
Well, I have a, you know, I'm no expert, right? But I have a feeling there's maybe a lot more monopoles than what we think because when I was looking through the information, they were talking about certain vertical clearances they have to maintain from power. And I was looking at my street, and the power is right at the top of the pole, and the other lower volt utilities, the cable and phone are down below, and there's no room for anything higher, and I'm not sure if they could mount on there without replacing the pole with something higher. I think the poles out in front of our house are somewhere around 40 feet, so they go up and they replace the poles with a 50-foot pole and put the thing there. So that may lead to a lot more cost on their part, and may be a lot more problematic to get PSE convinced to swap out one of their poles with a 50, with a 50-foot pole, for example. I would encourage the city to think a little more carefully about using, allowing city-owned light poles for these deployments. I think, I mean, I understand the safety concerns, but up and down all the major thoroughfares, those are all the city-owned lights, and that's where you'd think we'd have the highest deployment of these facilities. So, and it's always also the area where probably more aesthetic impact. And then ambient noise levels, I would also encourage a little more study on that. That varies from part of town to part of town. There's some areas in town in the middle of the day that you, you can't hear anything but the birds chirping. So 45 decibels is pretty loud in those neighborhoods. It may not be as loud on 228th, but, so we should be careful about setting those limits. I think, I think that's all I got for, for now. I'd like to let someone else have a try.
Larry?
I'll try to be quick on this. First, I think both of these are follow-ups on what the vice chair said. The staff put a lot of work into this and still is right now. What I wanted to do is highlight or bring out the graphics. I've been sitting on some commission for over 10 years now, and they seem like they improve at each meeting. So who, whomever is doing the graphics-
Hang on, man, right back there.
Okay. Yeah, a real shout out, and thank you. So now the, and then I have one later question, but this one, the TV show Monk, who is a city police consultant in San Francisco, had some rigid ideas about things, and it bothered him if things weren't aligned or organized correctly. I looked at the alignment, and we had horizontal lines. It would, I guess horizontally can also be a curve. Alignment can be a curve. So it would, to me, hopefully, I just allow that, that it's, can bend back and forth. Now Monk might not like it, but it's, okay. Oh, and I'll just throw this in, and then I honestly will turn it off. Have these features ever been placed on living trees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I see Kim vigorously not-
Think about it. I just wanted-
What we've been told too is that these, that trees can impact the signal, trees can interfere with the signal. And so oftentimes, you see a request to clear the trees, clear buildings, things like that. So I would be shocked if they had ever been deployed on a tree.
Plus, trees grow, and so-
Trees do grow, true.
That creates a problem for any facility you don't want to pay attention to. Okay, any other further questions or follow-up? I would echo Eric's comment about the city, perhaps in this instance, revisiting the idea of certain select locations allowing this because it, you know, it's one of those instances, at least from my viewpoint, where you, you may consider choosing the less bad option. Because if one option is 100 more poles, so that we don't put a, a small facility on the top of a light pole for the reasons that, you know, you mentioned, or we figure out a way to work together and eliminate 100 new poles and use the ones we have, I would kind of think that many people would like to figure out a way to choose the less bad option in that instance. Now, there are certainly many facility, many, many public, you know, the, the traffic signal poles is a perfect example. There are many where you'd say, well, no, that doesn't make any sense. But if all it is is a light pole, I, I think that would be worth revisiting and considering, given the potential that none of us yet have a grasp on for how many of these things are really going to show up on our streets.
If there are no more questions, I'd like to take a minute and go through this with you real quick.
Can I just have a quick question? Maybe it's for Andrew again. Do we have an inventory of poles in the city? Because I think the ones that I'm thinking about are more, you know, the ornamental, delicate kind, which are right on 228th, and, you know, there are some huge ones which I can, so I'm just trying to understand, you know, if, if we have to go this path where we say, you know, let's see if we can, these, these boxes can be hosted on, on top of the light poles, like, are there distinctions? Are there different gradations on what kind of poles we have in the city?
We do have several poles. We, I don't think we quite have a full inventory of the type. We know where light poles are. Three years ago, we had a company come in and do an asset inventory of everything in our, in our right of ways. But I don't think to distinguish between, you know, whether it's a decorative pole or whether it's the double one that's in the standards. I have a hesitation on these poles because I don't think they're structurally loaded to have anything attached to them. See, we can't even put banners on them, so if we were to do anything like that, we'd have to replace the entire poles for something like this, and that's something else we'd have to consider. But we, we know where the poles are, we just don't quite think have our inventory in place where we can identify yet which is which.
Thank you. So we have a couple of things we want to go over, actually more than a couple, but you have a little memo from us at your, at your dais there, and want to touch upon some of these here with you. These are changes that we're, we have found that we want to incorporate by the time you see the code again. One is, there was a question also, I think it was from Commissioner John here about ADA requirements. Looked into that. The minimum width for ADA is 36 inches, three feet. All we need really is a passing space. So as long as you have a passing space, if it's nowhere within that, you're going to be okay. And I think either side of the pole would consider as a passing space. There is, we need to change the term microcell to small wireless facilities throughout the code. Okay? And that's a definition within the FCC rules. We need to reference to offset poles. There's some dialogue there about, and I think you might even see this from some providers, about the offset for connection to like PSE poles. So we're just suggesting equipment offsets from a pole shall comply with the standards set by the pole owner. So it could be a PSE pole six months from now, PSE could, just whatever the owner requires. And then Table A, we have an issue in there. We're on the shot clock, we need to change a couple of the dates in the shot clock from a 90-day should be a 60-day under new microcell facility replacement pole. And then the completely concealed under Table A, that, that has a shot clock identified, we need to add 60 days for an existing pole. So these are, so far, house cleaning items, I would call them. Again, on Table A, which is on page nine, the completely concealed wireless facility height, it should not be in the underlying zone. We have other criteria identifying what that height is. And in that vein, we probably want to spend a little more time on discussing that. We don't have really anything to suggest to you this evening, but legal and I spent some time working through that. Today, we hoping we'd get to resolution, and we haven't, so we're going to be working on that, and you'll probably see some changes in height issues for the micro and the macro when you, when you see the, the draft code again. I missed out on the equipment size of 28 cubic feet for, for the small cell, so I need to add that language. Our variance language, we probably want to add height and distance because there's a narrative that states it's for location, but the way we drafted it, we think it probably should actually include height and not, not just location, height and distance. And then we changed the variance criteria. If you notice on my slide, it had A, B, C, and D. We thought two of them were repetitive, so you'll see three instead of four under, under the variance criteria because we thought two were repetitive. And then, let's see here, the amenity zone, we probably want to add language for planer strips and curves, actually, as Commissioner Crandall touched upon, we want to identify that amenity zone in the last, what if there's not a sidewalk on one side? What if there's a little planer strip? And talking with Public Works on that one slide I showed where it was the, there was the monopole in the grass area, it has to be at least two feet back from the curb. So we'll add language, minimum two feet back from the curb. And then, small wireless facility structure height definitions, conflict needs to be resolved. That's a redundant one I already shared with you. And so we gave you these so you know when you get the code again, you'll have a hard copy of what we had shared, of things that we still need to work on to try to clean up in, in the draft from what we see so far. Okay? Any questions on, on that?
Only just to reiterate, that's great. I would still take the time and the diligence to go through the comments that were received.
Yes, we will, definitely.
And it's, I mean, I, I do that as part of my job all the time, and it's, it can be mentally draining, but it's still a valuable exercise at this point so that we can boil this down to the real-
That was actually one of my notes, is that this is a workshop, this is still a working draft, and, you know, we did get the comments from the providers this week, so we intend to go through those more, more thoroughly, and there may be changes accordingly.
Can I, can I just add one comment as part of this discussion before we move on? The last time when we were here, we had someone present on some of the technical issues surrounding frequencies and electromagnetic radiation and that sort of thing. We also did receive some public comments to that effect, and I want to acknowledge the people that made those comments, that, you know, some of this technology, none of us are technical experts and don't understand. We did get some feedback from someone who had some expertise. I also think there's very little that we can justifiably do with that in the face of the FCC requirements that we're, that we're dealing with. So we're, I think we're all going to try to move forward the best way we can, but I do want to acknowledge people's concerns about that. We're not ignoring anyone. We're trying to figure out the best path forward and the conditions that we have, and we have actually gotten some, some testimony on that. And so we're focused on trying to make this work the best as it can.
I think that's a good acknowledgement. I think that's a good acknowledgement too of the fact that the city just has zero, zero regulatory authority over RF emissions. That's clearly within the FCC's jurisdiction, and the city really is just completely preempted from regulating that, so.
Thanks.
David Pyle, Community Development. I just, I've been in the back listening to the conversation, and I wanted to add two things that I thought were relevant to the discussion. One is that the graphics that are included in the draft code are not meant to indicate that that is what it will look like. It's merely indicating what it could look like, given the parameters presented. Because we have multiple different providers we're dealing with, multiple different types of equipment we're dealing with, one of the issues that we've been grappling with is the fact that it will likely look very different from provider to provider. So what we're trying to do in providing bookends is to bring them into conformance with each other so that they, they look and feel sort of the same. And what we're really shooting for is that the equipment is not disproportionate to the scale and character of the natural and built environment. In the past, we have had struggles with providers where they want to put up equipment that, for their own reasons, I understand their reasons, but that for the community seems disproportionate and egregious. So what we're trying to do is to find a way to allow them to continue to deploy their, their facilities in the city as a utility, like PSE is allowed to do. PSC is allowed to do, but to ensure that the facilities that they're building are within tolerances of each other and within what is considered to be reasonable in terms of its proportionality and scale to the built and natural environment. It'd be really difficult for us to study different areas in the city and create a different standard for different areas, aside from some of our dense multifamily or commercial areas. So that is something that I heard in this conversation, although I, my sense is, is that given the variability in what we might be seeing from the individual providers, it's harder for us to then create a tightened tolerance beyond what we already have in terms of our design standards. We could look at it, but my sense is, is that because the equipment variations are so great that creating an even tighter tolerance, they would tend to come back to us and tell us that we are almost prohibiting or precluding them from their ability to implement or to deploy their infrastructure. So that's just a few, those are just a few comments on some of the conversation. Do with it what you will.
David, can I have a quick question for you? Have you guys gone on any field trips just to see how different providers have done 5G implementation differently in different cities, like in Bellevue, maybe, or Kirkland?
So that I'm aware of, there are no cities in this region that are fully deployed with regard to 5G. There are some cities, I believe, that I've read about, like Denver. I believe there's deployment going on in Boulder, Colorado, right now. We actually got, I was in my office at 4:45 the other morning, and we got a phone call from Fort Collins, the city of Fort Collins. And it was 4:45 in the morning. So I answered the phone. And they were calling us because they've been watching some of our meetings. And they've been reading some of our information and asking us what we're doing over here. So, you know, they're facing it just as we are. It is an emerging technology. My understanding from the providers is, is that they're still not done or deploying 4G and that 5G will begin to roll out in the near future, although they themselves, as I understand it, are not fully settled on the technology and what it will look and feel like.
Thanks.
I'm a little caught up in people in Fort Collins watching all of us.
I've got a quick question for you, David. So I understand the desire to not kind of get in the weeds and, you know, specialize throughout the city. But when you say it's proportional to the surrounding natural and built environment, that right there does the same thing. Because depending on where you're at in the city, the natural and built environment could be very different and demanding a different solution. So are we saying that, you know, that turns into a subjective thing potentially, I guess? I don't know. I mean, it's hard to...
That's the complexity of it. And given the fact that we have a time limitation on permitting, we have a limitation on our ability to influence the look and feel of these facilities in so much as we can't prohibit them. We are limited in our ability because of our staffing and our technical knowledge base to push back when providers come in and tell us, we can't do that. It's technically infeasible to do what you're asking us to do. Then, as you identified in your conversations, we get caught in this back and forth debate where they basically do a data dump on us. And we're kind of paralyzed by it because we don't know how to interpret 100 pages of technical documentation. So what we've been trying to do is to, instead, incentivize the provider to go to a prescribed design standard by making it easy for them to get a permit to deploy the facility. It's hard to incentivize things in development. We've had those conversations regarding other topics like single-family home placement on a property. How do you incentivize something? And we feel that finding a standard that is tolerable to the community wherein if we see these facilities rolled out, there is some uniformity to how it's being done, where they're being placed, how they look, that if we can get them to do that, and we can help in the permitting process and meet all the FCC requirements that we're required to meet, then it's actually something where we could see some consistency in proper deployment in the city. If we get to a point where we're trying to implement rules on the implementation side that are very complex, that's when we start to see an exceedance of the shot clock. And if we exceed the shot clock, then they have a right to proceed with their implementation or their deployment regardless of what we're doing, as I understand it.
I want to clarify that. That's only true for the eligible facilities modification requests. For everything else, the remedy if we bust a shot clock is expedited judicial relief. So the possibility of an injunction or something like that.
Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, just, there's a lot of pages here and a lot of changes being made. And I was wondering if we could get like a matrix of changes that are happening going forward so that, I mean, we've got a public hearing coming up next, and that's a lot of stuff that's going to be changed.
Absolutely. We'll do that, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to your slide presentation, just one quick question about the different tiers. There was one in there, it was talking about R zones, and it was specific to right-of-way only in those R zones. But then there was some other ones that were talked about R zones, and it wasn't, didn't seem specific to the right-of-way. And it led one to believe that it could be on any private piece of property.
I think Jackie's going to bring that up here.
Did anyone else have anything? Okay, well, while she's doing that, I want to just indulge for 20 seconds and remind everyone of roles here. Because I think it's important to, in these kind of instances, state this. So let's talk about who the parties are. We have providers who are commercial entities trying to deploy a system that'll solicit customers and make money. Pretty straightforward. We have staff who are trying to follow the rules and enable our code to comply with FCC requirements and also provide for what people, some people in the city will want as a service. As a commission, we have a slightly different obligation in that we are at the bequest of the council here to represent the citizens of Sammamish and what they will want. Now, I think I just encourage everyone to consider that for a minute because in my mind, that's a bit of a challenge. Because people will, in general, be upset when these systems get deployed. They will be equally upset when their phone doesn't do what they want it to do. And there's a lot of opportunity for blame. So it's really our obligation here to balance those two objectives and find a way to create something that has at least a reasonable chance of working reasonably well for everyone. And I think what we've created should do that. And nobody's going to be happy. And that's probably the best outcome we could hope for, is a situation where everybody is equally unhappy with the answer. So thank you for indulging me. But I'd just like to remind people that we each have a different role. And that's how we've come to where we have on this technical issue that will certainly affect the aesthetics of our community. Go ahead, Mark.
I would add to that, that there's the health component that I think a lot of citizens are still very concerned with, that needed to be addressed in any way we can. Obviously, we're limited with the FCC requirements. But I think the education piece to that is important, too.
I just want to follow up on, especially what the chair said. We also are here to solve things. But that doesn't mean final solutions, but we have a task. And I started to think back again, I'm the oldest one in the room. The Pony Express probably didn't go well with a lot of people.
Are you that old?
That route. Well, I knew about it. But speaking of old and the question, I don't know how many people in the room realize, when we had mail carriers that came to your door in the 40s, 1940s, they came to the public doors twice a day during the weekday. And businesses were delivered mail three times a day. Now, I'm moving from when they slipped it through the door to there were mailboxes on the rural routes and out by the curbs. We kind of worked that through. And also, there was newspaper boxes, but that's a whole nother story. What I'm saying is, I think we can, I use the word acronym SIP. We can select, inspect, and prioritize and get this done and move ahead in the communication media world. Okay?
Thank you.
So yes, tier one within public right-of-way exclusive of right-of-way and R zones for tier one. And then over on the variance, we got R1 through R8 zone property.
Correct.
And that's right-of-way, street right-of-way or private property.
Or private property.
HOA, whichever.
Correct. And again, the reason we have that structure and we tried to cover the gamut of where the provider could go is because if we don't, and we leave something out, and the provider comes in with, let's say, a batched application, and we find that, well, this isn't going to work, and we have no provision for relief, they could come back and say, well, without that cell there, my system's not going to work. And you've effectively prohibited my deployment. And so we had to come up with a system to try and deploy it in any scenario because of that provision in the FCC rule.
Anything else? Great. Thank you. Anything else, Dennis?
No, sir. We're good.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We will have a bit of public comment on this topic now. It looks like I've got, without having forgotten my reading glasses, two people that want to make public comment. First is Kim. Okay.
Because we have a lot of comments about this, we want, our goal as providers is to have a workable path forward to deploy these small cells. And as it stands today, it's a good start, having an exemption process if we meet the criteria. That's a great start. And we can work with that. But the criteria have to be achievable. And so with some of the antenna volume restrictions, the equipment volume restrictions, they're not achievable. And they're also inconsistent with the FCC order. So I think that there's some work and some back and forth with staff that we'd like to do to talk about why we need the larger volumes and why the FCC order needs to be consistent with the code that Sammamish ultimately adopts. So we would appreciate more time for that. The code that came out last week was very different from the earlier drafts that we had seen. And so I apologize for the lateness of the comments coming in. We got it on Wednesday, I think. And I opened it thinking it was going to be the same thing I'd redlined once before, and it was a very different code. So we've also sent, Verizon has sent two staff today, or yesterday, also some design typicals that we're deploying in the Pacific Northwest so that you can get an idea of the types of form factor that we're actually talking about and that are actually being deployed in Kent and Kirkland and cities all around this region. I think that I heard a discussion about city-owned poles. And we would ask for your support in citing on city-owned light poles. I think that, and in many cities, we do work with Public Works to cite on light standards in neighborhoods for just that reason. It's directly related to how many new poles we're going to need. So if we can't cite on city-owned assets, a new pole is often the only alternative that we have. And each of the poles has a disconnect switch for our equipment and the power so that you can work on that pole anytime you want without having Verizon or another provider come out and touch it. And we'll come back out and turn it back on after you're done. So we are working with Public Works staff around the region to make that resource available so that cities can limit the number of new poles in the right-of-way. We're looking at some of the dimensional standards that are a little bit, that are challenging. I think we had some discussion with staff, and it was noticed the 600-foot separation between one Verizon pole and the next Verizon pole. If we're deploying 5G at millimeter wave, the range of coverage is between 200 and 700 feet. So it's at the high end and could interfere with the availability and deployment of 5G when the company is ready to bring that to the city of Sammamish. So we urge you to kind of future-proof and look at creating a feasible path forward with these regulations. And again, we're very happy to work with staff on this. To, in fact, we're finishing another red line of the code that you just got so that we can have input on the technical aspects of the code. So that, you know, as far as the providers and Verizon is concerned, we really want to work with you to make sure that your community is okay with what we're deploying on your poles. Our folks live and work in your community. The representative from AT&amp;T grew up here in Sammamish. And I work with his dad, who still lives in Sammamish. So we all live in your communities, too. And we care about what it looks like. And we're working hand in glove with many cities to develop pole designs and that are workable, but also fit in to the various areas of the city. And we certainly are willing to undertake that effort with the city of Sammamish as well. So our ask tonight is to schedule one more work session before we get to the public hearing so that we have some time to kind of work out some of the technical bugs that are going on and provide you with the code that everybody's pretty good with, even if we haven't resolved all of the issues. And then to the public hearing, because we really would like to get this right. I'm sure you don't want this code coming back to you anytime soon for revisions. So I think it's worthwhile to put the time in, roll up our sleeves, and come up with something that's acceptable to your community and works for our customers as well. So as I said, we'll be here at all your meetings and are happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for your comments, Kim. Greg, you're next. When there's only two of you in the room, it's pretty easy to figure out who's going to be making comments. So thank you for making it easy on me.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group. And I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. And I did grow up in Sammamish, but right now I live in Kenmore, right next to 150-foot-tall macro facility. So I am experiencing all of the wonderful design considerations and making sure our wireless is integrated with our community. I'm getting a firsthand sight of how that works. So I'd like to thank you for the chance to speak tonight, especially the generous seven-minute allocation. Ultimately, AT&amp;T's ask tonight is, again, the same as my colleagues at Verizon. We would like to ask for an additional work session to discuss the code. The code that we received recently is different, very different from the draft we received in August. I've driven as far east as Yakima and as far west as Long Beach, and I have not seen code like this. It's different. It's different than anything my colleagues have seen in Washington. And since it's new, we would appreciate a little extra time to, as Kim said, get it right. Code is, the technical side doesn't match up with, unfortunately, the practical realities of deploying AT&amp;T's equipments. As Mr. Osborne said, there are cities having discussions with PSC about setbacks, set-offs from the pole. As we may have discussed last time, there has to be a certain distance between any equipment that's put on PSC wood poles so that there's opportunities for PSC workers to climb the pole in the event they can't use bucket trucks. And the current draft of the code, four inches, we're required to put equipment boxes four inches off the pole. With PSC regulations, they're five inches. Other technical sides, AT&amp;T's equipment boxes, we can't get all of our equipments on PSC poles as it is because of the code's current requirement that we, the furthest edge of the equipment box cannot go further than a certain distance. And this prohibits us from using some of our equipment. And it's this kind of thing that... And it's this kind of thing that the industry appreciates time to provide inputs and say, "Yes, the code says this, but if we want to deploy our equipment, we simply can't do it under these regulations." And the way the FCC order is worded, it's important that every provider have an opportunity to deploy its equipment. It has to be feasible for all carriers. And right now, with the code itself, there's some issues with internal consistency. As Mr. Osborne said, there's conflicts in the code, there's conflicts in the current code, and there's also conflicts in the proposed code, which, as he said, are being addressed. And additional time and additional work sessions to discuss are appreciated. As Mr. Pyle said, tighter tolerances can lead to difficulties in deploying. And if we can provide inputs, we can avoid any conflicts between the code and what the providers actually intend to deploy and what our targets are. So, the staff mentioned that they're reworking several sections of the code, especially the variance section. This is a particular section that AT&amp;T would like to comment on because it's, this is, the variance is for the edge cases. Anyone who's versed in technology knows how important those edge cases are. In cases where, okay, it'll work for the majority of them, as Steph said, it's important for a good amount of applications to go through the system easily, but in cases where they don't, it's important to have a robust system to analyze them. So, that's another part of the code that could use some extra attention. And ultimately, we're asking for additional time to review and provide comments and hopefully schedule another hearing, sorry, a work session before the hearing on December 12th. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I would just mention, I guess, that we'll take that under advisement with the staff. I would also just remind everybody that this is the planning commission and there'll be a whole nother round of discussion with the council. So, you know, we may work our way all the way through this and then get to, we'll get to rehash it again anyway with the council. We do try to be expedient with things in that light, that it's going to go through a couple of different public hearings. So, we do want to move this forward. So, let's talk about the right way to do that, but we have lots of other business too. So, let's make sure we manage the calendar appropriately. Okay. Since there's no one else here, I'm assuming we have no more public comment. Anything else we need to discuss? David Pyle in the back, anything we need to cover? Kelly, anything? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You guys are so excited to be here that you...
Second.
It's been moving in second to the, we adjourn the meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, everyone.